Commissioner Blanca?
Sorry?
No, no, no. Time is up. Let me know when we are live. Yolanda? We live?
We are, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty. It is now 7:33 PM, Wednesday, October 5th, 2022, and is a regular City Commission meeting of the City of West Miami. For the invocation, please rise.
Let's bow our head tonight, and let's dedicate our prayers to all of our neighbors on the West Coast who are suffering as a result of Hurricane Ian. We pray for those who passed away as a result of the storm and for their loved ones, the ones they left behind. We extend our prayers and our gratitude to all of our first responders, police officers, and all the volunteers who have stepped up to offer help and provide assistance in an area that has been devastated by the hurricane. We pray for the survivors so that they can stay strong as they pick up their pieces. Lord, grant the survivors resolve, strengthen their faith during these difficult moments as they begin to rebuild their lives. Father, keep West Miami Police Department Sergeant Elvis Borrego and Officer Cruz out of harms way, and bless them for making a difference by volunteering with this cause. May they return home safely. We ask this in your name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I know that I didn't pound the gavel, but obviously this meeting is called to order. Still, roll call, please.
Yes, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca. Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have call.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for September 21st, 2022, regular commission meeting. Final budget hearing.
Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
You have a motion by Commissioner Blanca, second by Commissioner Chavez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item.
Item five, public comments.
Seeing none.
None, Mr. Mayor.
Unless there's invisible. Uh, next item.
Item six, report of city manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission. I've issued a written report. Tonight, I'm here to report to you that there's our automatic renewal of the city's two-year catering agreement is coming up on December 1st, 2022, and ending November 30th, 2023, following our contract agreement with Greater Miami Catering Service. They provide catering to the senior program of the City of West Miami. We were notified in writing that they conducted a cost analysis of the services that they render to our community center as well as all the other sites that they provide service to. And they have concluded that due to the present and future inflation expected costs they are experiencing anywhere from 10% to 20% increase in goods and services. That results in an increase of 3.98% per meal, which is what they are proposing for the congregant meals. They have pledged to maintain the cost throughout the life of the program for the home-delivered meal, which is the big one, because we have more home-delivered meal clients than we do onsite clients here. So, we are confident that we will be able to absorb the increase this year by transferring some of the dollars because of our contract modification clause. So, I did not want to respond to them until I brought this to your attention and advise you of the changes that are being made. And there's nothing for us to sign. It's just acknowledging the fact that they're having to increase their prices. I provided you with a copy of the letter from Greater Miami as well. I believe it's dated September 12th. The next item is sidewalk replacement. City has prepared a set of bid documents that will be published following our procurement process. The city will be accepting and receiving bids through an electronic process this year for sidewalk repairs and replacement. Mr. Penna, you have made arrangements to place the bids on the DemandStar program? So, the answer is yes. And the submittal date for the bid is set for opening on November 28th, 2022, at 2:00 PM. We will keep you posted on the bids, on the tabulation, and bring back to you the recommendation from staff. The next item is our 2022 Halloween event. Preparations are underway. We purchased all the Halloween candy, and we have taken up the space in the conference room. I hope you don't mind. This is only for a few days. Some of the decorations have been purchased, and we are going through the old decorations to see if we can use whatever we used back in 2019. So, preparations for the flyers to be delivered, that'll happen probably late next week as soon as they come back from the printer. If you have any questions. Also, the letter from Mayor Diaz-Padrón went out to our business owners, asking them to participate and to donate candy so that the kids can get their trick-or-treating at the park. The next item on my report is the report involving Hurricane Ian and the Police Department. The city is being represented in the area hit hardest on the West Coast by two of our officers, and we pray for their safe return. Their mission is a 14-day, for now, mission, unless I'm told otherwise by the chief. I think we're good with 14 days for now. We're really proud of our police officers, and we pray and we thank them for what they're doing. The next item on my report is, as a reminder, I've made plans to be on a very short vacation, starting tomorrow morning. In my absence, as customary, I designate Mercedes Leon as the acting city manager. And you know that I will be in contact with the office, and I will have access to emails and text messages if you need to get in touch with me. And then, final item in my report is Columbus Day. In observance of Columbus Day, and because this is one of the observed holidays, City Hall will be closed Monday, October 10th, and there will be garbage pickup and recycling service, as customary. And if any resident has a problem, they can definitely contact the West Miami Police Department. And we have put notices up on the website and sent a blast email and all of that good stuff.
Thank you.
No, thank you, sir.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns on the manager's report? Seeing none. Next item.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item.
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
I don't see him, so I'm guessing he doesn't have a report.
Yes, item nine, committee reports.
Does anybody have anything for committee reports? Anything from Parks and Rec or...?
We set a next meeting for November...
Second.
Second.
At 6:00 PM.
So, in anticipation of that meeting, there was an email sent out. I believe everybody should have gotten it to kind of brainstorm to see what we're gonna put our attention towards to add to the capital improvement plan for the city.
Good.
There will be an agenda published for the benefit of the public, and it's going to be a joint workshop between the mayor and city commission and the members of the Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay. Make sure that, yeah, make sure that's published sunshine.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Madam Manager, can you elaborate a little bit on the progress for the...
Street signs.
Brainlock. No, not street.
Not something else.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry. Welcome, welcome signs.
For the recognition for our Commissioner Rebecca Sosa.
Of course, sir. I've been working with Vice Mayor Blanes, as instructed by the mayor, on the event for District 6 Commissioner Rebecca Sosa that will be held October 26th at the Rebecca Sosa Multipurpose Facility Building. We have made arrangements. We've partnered with a very generous gentleman who is actually gathering donations to bring donations to Amigos for Kids, which is an organization that is very dear to Commissioner Sosa. So, Amigos for Kids will be receiving donations, and they will be paying for the expenses associated with catering the event. We have sent out save-the-date notices to some of the city officials for the cities, as instructed by her office. We're working very closely with Vice Mayor Blanes and Betty from Commissioner Rebecca Sosa's office so that we can finalize a list. And my assistant is putting together a complete list and sending out to save the dates. We hope to have everything, everyone, the invites go out next Monday. This event will take place between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. And I will get with the chief as well because we have to provide for some police because of, we expect that there will be a large turnout. So, that's pretty much what we have right now, unless I'm missing something. Vice Mayor?
No, no, but since you did mention the street signs.
Yes.
What the heck is going on with the street signs?
The welcome signs. I did this to myself.
Well, both times. Welcome and street signs.
Okay. The welcome signs, I asked Mr. Penna today to provide a status. Apparently, they're waiting for some materials that is coming from Texas. And the material has not arrived yet. But the contractor has a notice to proceed in hand, and hopefully, we'll see those.
All the permitting is done?
All the permitting is done.
The permitting is done, so we're just waiting for the
Yes.
supply chain problem to...
Yes, sir.
As long as it's not China.
Well, it's Texas, so...
It's a free state.
And the street signs, the street signs still have not been completed, but we are working. We're rolling out.
I haven't seen any new ones.
16th Street. And then, we have to relocate. Remember that we told you at the end of the project, we will relocate the ones that we retrofitted at the beginning. Those will be put in the avenues and in uniform, with uniformity.
There's a section in the southwest part of the city, near the Publix, just north of the Publix, where, you know, I still see some of the old signs there.
Right. The old signs are there. There was... I'm sorry? So, 16th Street would be that part that's next, that remains to be done. And then, when we finalize it, we're going to put in, make sure that all the older signs that were not retrofitted will go in the same section. And then, we'll bring out the larger signs that we attempted to retrofit and put those in the avenues or closer to the commercial area, as agreed.
Well, it would definitely be the main thoroughfares.
Right.
16th Street, 62nd.
Right. 67th.
And 67th, and 8th Street, and 57th.
Correct.
And Silvania.
Correct.
Those are the only streets that you get the big signs.
Correct.
Right, Mr. Penna? Okay. Alright.
We will get it done.
I'd like to see this happen.
Alrighty. You did it to yourself, Madam Manager.
Yes, I did, sir.
So, no one feels bad for you on that one. So, next item.
Yes, next item is item 10 on their unfinished business. Item 10A and B. It's a request for appeal of decision by the planning and zoning board by application for signed permit presented at April 26, 2022, before the board by business owner Jerry Diaz. Property address 6200 Southwest 8th Street, West Miami, Florida, 32144.
So, on this application, Mr. Attorney, I know there is a lot of back and forth on the owner and the tenant, and who didn't have standing. In fact, here it's still kind of screwed up because it says business owner Jerry Diaz, and I don't think he's the business owner. He has a tenant. But you're working with them. They couldn't make it tonight because they were still working on some legal issues in the background, right, on standing?
Well, I have spoken to the gentleman various times, and I advise him that the rules are the rules, and this are the rules that we have applied in the past, and in fact, is the law. So, he said that he would be here tonight, but he's not, so...
So, yeah, so, I, you know, I'm all for people having the right to appeal. I mean, this has been on the agenda for a long time. And I'm all for having the people the right to appeal their stuff and let us hear it. So, I'd say we just kind of defer indefinitely. They're having some progress there on getting a letter from who's going to represent them and things like that. So, we just defer indefinitely. They come back and tell us when they're ready to go, because we're not gonna keep it on the agenda week after week. So, that's the way I would approach this. You know, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, alright. That's item A and B.
A and B, Mr. Mayor. And on items 10C and D, the legal counsel for Mr. Rodriguez had requested deferral this item until the next commission meeting of October 19.
Okay.
So, we request to withdraw items C and D.
Well, this was a continuance. Is this a continuance?
Yes, this is a continuance since it was, at the last meeting, was continued.
Okay. All in favor, continuing until October 19th? Aye?
Aye.
All in favor, four, what's it, five, 5-0? All against, say, what is it? All against, say nay? Saying none? Okay, 5-0. And that is all of the old business.
Yes. On their new business agenda items, item 11A, introduction of new FPL representative, Joseph Patron, by Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Please, go to the mic. This is not a cousin of mine.
Hey, good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here, an honor to meet every one of you. I just wanted to come and introduce myself as your new external affairs manager for the city. Anything in and all at FPL matters that you need, you can bring it through me, and I can help you with anything that the city might need. I was introduced to the Madam Manager as Ian took out a big chunk of the population here in West Miami, and we were able to quickly get that up. And a lot of it's due to the hardening we've been doing over the last 15 years. And we can proudly say with all, even though there's a lot of devastation on the southwest coast, the transmission system, which is really the central nervous system of our grid, withstood all the storm, including here in Miami. So, it enables us to restore rather quickly. And we saw that here in Miami-Dade when we restored all within the day. So...
I wasn't in direct contact with you during Ian, but through the manager, I was in contact with you. So, I appreciate your quick response to the grid's problems that we're having. I got a lot of calls. But residents were, seemed pretty happy on the response and getting power back online. So, I appreciate that. And, you know, I think working with the city, you're gonna find, is very easy. There's a lot of competent staff here and a lot of experience. And you don't have a franchise fee issue here because that was dealt with a couple of years early. So, I'm glad you're here today. I'm glad you're here in front of us. And I look forward to working with you and, you know, over the next couple of years, hopefully.
Likewise, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Patron?
Come back to the mic.
I'd like to make some comments.
I go, I didn't think, I didn't think, I go, he's gonna leave, and Commissioner Suarez isn't gonna say anything? No, go ahead.
No, because he's a nice guy, you know? He was respecting the signs of the commissioners and the Police Department. And he was, you know, trying to park his car in the right way. So, I helped him to park. And then, he respected everything. Well, let me tell you, Mr. Patron. I know a bunch of families, Patron last name. And...
He doesn't like some of them.
99.99 of them are good. So, I hope you do, you do a very good job here with us. So, now, then, he's going to call, you know, call Mr. Patron. So, don't, we are going to call you, okay? So, I hope you like us, and I hope, even we call you a lot, you don't get mad with us.
Absolutely not.
Alright?
It's my job to serve you.
Okay. I hope you be sweet and nice like a Mandy.
Absolutely.
Armando.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to see how you conduct yourself. You know, at the beginning, he was asking, where can I park my car? So, nice meeting you, sir.
Likewise.
And everybody here likes you because your last name is easy to remember. Because the mayor is Diaz-Padrón. So, your Patron name is popular in town, alright?
Thank you.
So, thank you. And I have to congratulate FPL to select you for us because I have understand that you are a very nice guy in the FPL workforce.
Thank you.
That's what I heard.
That's the rumor in the street. Keep it like that.
Welcome, welcome. Yeah, I know.
We'll keep an eye on it.
I appreciate, appreciate you. Thank you. Next item.
Yes, item 11B, follow-up report in reference to Little Library Project by Commissioner Chavez.
Go ahead.
So, this is an item that was brought up a few meetings back. Excuse me. Mr. Penna ordered three Little Libraries? Three? They should be, they're en route now, so when they get here, we'll inspect them, make sure.
Actually, we have received them.
Okay.
I have not seen them, but maybe you can come by and look at them.
Okay, perfect. So, look at them now and...
So, what are the sites that we're looking at? Yeah, just come to the mic. You've avoided all night so far, so...
I tried.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The sites that we were discussing with the manager was the Recreation Center, Cooper Park, and Garden Club Park.
Okay. Yep, that sounds right. Beautiful.
Well, what was the, there was an issue with the other site, correct? The fiberglass ones? The other, the Little Library, it was a different material that I had sent?
The blue and white one. Remember that I sent you two websites, two sites. The second one was the one that Commissioner Chavez wanted us to look into. I think you had advised that they were on back order or...
Yeah, there was some supply issue.
Yeah.
In order to get these out, and this is comparable to the equipment that we have out there. In the center of that goes a four-by-four buried in the ground. And that gets covered by that structure that you see there. And it has nice, long bolts to keep it all intact.
Sounds good. This is downstairs?
Yes.
Perfect. I'll go look at it afterwards. Thank you, Mr. Penna.
Beautiful. And I guess we can, you can keep on working on the project to see how you want to roll it out and, you know, see how we work in the community to roll that out.
Definitely, to see what kind of books we put in there and if we can get anyone as a steward.
Sure.
Potentially work with Miami-Dade Library Systems.
Yep. Fantastic. Alright, anything else on that? Need a report?
No, that's it.
Anything? Okay. Next item.
Item 11C, annual evaluation of the city manager by mayor and city commission.
So, item C and D, it comes up yearly. I'll just, I'll just start by saying that I think you're doing a phenomenal job, Madam Manager. You know, obviously, the city kind of runs, you know, itself at this point, due to you, because you've been doing it so long. You have everyone working on, you have everyone working around the clock, and I think you're doing a great job. I want to submit a written evaluation for the record. So, I'll just say that to begin with. And I'll let my colleagues take the, you know, say whatever they need to say, but I'll be submitting a written evaluation this week. And, but you know my stance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I truly appreciate your comment and...
You're doing a great, great job.
Thank you so much.
I definitely echo what Mr. Mayor and Candida Commissioner Blanca stated as well. You're doing an amazing job. For me, as a new commissioner, getting in in April, I've leaned on you for a lot of questions. You've always had the answer. I don't think, you didn't have the answer a single time. But regardless, you've always been there to answer whatever question, even if it's 8:00 at night. I'm sorry for those late phone calls as well.
That's what I'm there for.
Any call isn't late for her.
Weekends, everything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, my comment is that the mayor and the clerk, they are doing an outstanding job. Really, very, very, very good. We are very proud to have the, she's famous. Our manager is famous because she's very smart and always is there. And our clerk, you know, has been learning and always has been very, very good in her job.
Thank you, Commissioner Suarez.
Outstanding job.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I, you know, I can say a lot about the city manager and the city clerk. All good. City manager is on call 24/7, basically. You know, I call her up early in the morning and late at night sometimes, and she's always there. So, with that said, you know, you can't ask for more. The job that she does is above board, you know? She's been running this city, this little city. It's tough to run because it's not like most cities, you know? Big cities, you have different levels of, you know, qualifications and employees, you know, that handle one thing and the other. But here, you know, you gotta wear many hats. And, you know, you gotta be city manager, you gotta be this, that, and the other. And she is able to do them all.
Thank you, sir.
So, kudos to the city manager. And our city clerk, you know, she does a great job. Again, she sometimes wears different hats and make things happen. You know, again, you know, it's a small city and not much help, you know, to get the job done. So, you know, she makes it happen. And like Commissioner Suarez stated, you know, our city clerk has enriched herself, you know, with many different distinct qualifications and certifications, you know, which, you know, it's a lot of virtue in that effort. So, I congratulate her for that. All in all, we have a great city manager and a great city clerk.
Thank you.
And great commission, too.
Oh, yeah. That goes without...
There's no evaluation of the city commissions.
So, if I may...
The evaluation's called an election.
So, if I may, you all make it easier for us as well. I can't think of a better place where I have spent almost 40 years of my life. You're all exceptional leaders, but you're fantastic human beings. And I think that's the right combination. That's the balance. But I can't be who I am, and I cannot deliver what I try to deliver in the best way possible if it weren't for my team. The clerk, the chief, our Public Works and Planning and Zoning, our city engineer, our city attorney, and my finance director, and all those, our community center director. We are surrounded by people who have a passion for the city, who love what we do. And I think that's why we walk the extra mile. But it means the world to me and to them that you think highly of our job, and for that, we thank you.
Thank you. The, I was, I know my colleagues took C and D together. I was taking them separate. So, in, for the clerk's evaluation, I know some of you already mentioned the clerk. So, I, you know, I'm also gonna submit a written evaluation as well this week on... And I think it's a good thing when, you know, you don't hear the clerk's name a lot and because that means they're doing their job. So, the, I'm, you know, I'm satisfied. I think you're doing, you're very responsive to everything that I've asked for and very prompt. I think that's the fundamentals of the job, is getting out things and publicizing them promptly and doing them with care and not leaving any procedural issues on the table by doing things incorrectly and hastily without... on the table by, by doing things incorrectly and hastily without, without, and, but you have the knowledge because you've enriched yourself, as they've mentioned, and, and I think that's, uh, a huge benefit to the city. But I will be, uh, as well, uh, putting in a written evaluation this week on, on both, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words.
The, next item?
Yes, so we've covered, uh, item C and D.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, pause.
I want to add something.
Go ahead.
Because now, we beginning the new year fiscal, you know, and we have to start to watch and recognize the new code enforcement officer we have, is doing very well, I tell you. Thank you very much.
I, I've been hearing, uh, good, bad things.
Well, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
He's doing his job.
Yeah, that's, that's, exactly. Uh, so, next item?
Yes, uh, next item will be eleven E, discussion and request for direction in reference to holiday slash Christmas twenty-two event by city manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason why I bring this is because the holidays are upon us, and I want to get a direction from the mayor and city commission on, you know, the special events that we used to have, uh, before COVID, and, um, if your desire is to have a, a holiday event, we need to start prepping for that as well.
Yeah, I, I think that there is a, you know, a genuine want for community gatherings after the last couple of years of COVID. Um, I think, I think we're back on schedule, I think we're back to, back to normal completely. So, I don't, I, I, you know, I, we're talking, we're talking about the lighting of the tree here?
Uh, the lighting of the tree ceremony, well, we usually had it at the rec, I don't know, I know Mr. Penna is leaning towards having our events at Cooper Park because of the impact to our, our basketball courts, and so putting all that, uh, carnival equipment and, you know, just the volume of people that attend, and, um, we want to make sure that we take care of those courts, they're expensive and they're meant to be played on, so...
Yeah, I, I, I like, I like, obviously, the setup of the rec, um, but the courts is an issue.
Yes.
So if that can't be rectified, or that can't be avoided, then we might have to just keep doing it at Cooper. Um, but again, I, I'll treat her that to my colleagues and their opinions and administration, but, and recommendation, but, does anybody have any burning opinions on that?
No, I agree, if it's creating a, an issue with the basketball courts that we're going to have to keep on addressing time and time again, then it's going to be better to have it at Cooper Park, definitely.
Okay, so what's, what's the administration recommendation on that?
Uh, our recommendation is that we hold it at Cooper Park, we have the stage area there that, uh, were, were the, we don't have to put up a stage, it, it looks super elegant, it really does, and I think we can decorate that nicely with a Christmas tree and obviously have the children, Christmas is about children and their joy.
Was parking, so, what's the last event we had at Cooper? Was it, uh...
That was the...
Was it the Easter?
That was the Easter egg hunt.
No, the last, the last one we had, I think it was Easter.
Easter.
Um, was parking an issue?
Um, let me yield to you...
I'm getting guesses. I, I know parking is always an issue, but...
Yes, it's always.
Is, was it more of an issue?
Yeah, um, parking's an issue at both places, but what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and, uh, try to get with Somerset to see if they'll allow us to park there while there's no school.
And Sylvania.
And Sylvania.
Sylvania's a county property, that's, that's another issue.
I, I'd be happy to speak to the, to the incoming school, remember, we'll be at that point, sworn in, um, to, uh, see if we can, because that would, I think, would be a big, big help.
Yeah, I don't, again, I, we have no control over what they do.
Right, so I, I'd be happy to facilitate that con, that conversation, see if there's, you know, if they would be willing to partner with us on that.
We, we will be getting in contact with Somerset, and we'll...
Okay, so we'll, we'll talk about that privately and...
So, and, and if we proceed then in this fashion, Mr. Mayor, we'll prepare a letter for you or for your representative on the commission that you want spearheading this, this event, we can prepare a letter inviting the schools' participation. We usually invite, um, Somerset, Sylvania, and we've invited the Biltmore in the past as well, because they have kids that, you know, of, of West Miami families.
Beautiful. I mean, we, we've done this event, we've done this event, uh, nicely for a long time, so I think we'll just kind of keep trying the same, except at Cooper, which I think we held it one year at Cooper, right?
We did, a, a while ago, and then what we did was during COVID, we put up the Christmas tree and allowed families to go and take pictures there.
Okay, so we'll, we'll work on the parking situation, we'll try to facilitate that, we'll try to mitigate that as much as possible, but...
Um, maybe Publix will be friendly to allowing...
They have not because of insurance issues.
Yeah, I doubt, I doubt they'll be friendly.
Is, is, may I ask, may I ask a question? Can we close the street, um, that abuts the Publix on Fifty-seventh Court?
We can, yes. Uh, yeah, we can, at least one lane.
That'll provide for additional parking?
I mean, it, it also depends on the time.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't know what day this falls on.
Uh, that's another thing we need to look at.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question.
We usually have it during the week because kids prepare for their music in school, and we usually have it, it's usually been on a Wednesday night, traditionally. Let me check and see...
The problem that they have is that that's the, the, that avenue is the rear.
It's where the trucks come in, right?
It's where the trucks come in, so, you know, they don't have a standard hour to, to arrive, and we can't stop them from, from going in there.
Right.
So...
I mean, they might choose, we should probably keep Publix in the know because they might choose not to have deliveries in that time because the trucks might have problems, I don't know, depending on how cars decide to park.
Yeah, a, again, I think it's going to be a time issue, uh, obviously it's going to be at night, late afternoon.
Yes, um, I would, generally, we, we schedule it for five-thirty, but we really start at six o'clock. Um, we were just looking at the calendar, and it looks like December fourteenth, it's a Wednesday, it may be a good day, uh, it is a non-commission week, so that'll give us the opportunity to devote our effort to the event. Um, if you agree with the date, then we can move forward with that.
Um, does, does anybody have a, does anybody have any objection to that date? December fourteenth? Nope? Okay, so I think that's what we're going to aim for.
So five-thirty PM, say, six o'clock, official start of the, um, of the event.
All righty, well, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, next item?
Item twelve, consent agenda items, and you have one item, uh, which is a resolution, Mr. Mayor, if you want me to read it?
Uh, yeah, read it because I'll just briefly explain it, well, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, item A, twelve A, resolution of mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida, accepting a donation by the Brianna Bergara Foundation of an automatic external defibrillator, AED, to be available at the West Miami Recreation Center to be used in emergency situations of cardiac arrests, providing for an effective date.
So, this, uh, this came to be from a discussion with a longtime resident, um, whose son had issues, um, while playing sports as a, as a kid with, uh, with his heart, and, uh, the Brianna Bergara Foundation was set up by, uh, the father of Brianna Bergara, who passed away, um, as a, as a child due to heart issues. So they do two things, one of the things they do is they work with schools primarily and, uh, in getting EKGs for kids, uh, done, and then the other thing they do is provide, uh, for AEDs to be set up, uh, where their focus is on kids, right, so where kids play, um, for the situation you don't, you hope does not happen, which is that there is a, a child that has an issue, um, at that moment. So, they've, uh, donated one to the city of West Miami, um, for the rec, so we will, uh, set up a, uh, they, we'll, we'll set up an event where, we'll receive it, but we'll set up an event where they can, they can, you know, present us with it, and we'll hopefully do some media around their foundation to help them, uh, get some publicity and hopefully attract more, uh, donations and things of that nature for their cause. Um, so we'll, we'll work internally to see, hopefully, I'm thinking, uh, what I discussed with them is trying to pick a day, a time or a day when there's already people around, and we'll just do this in addition, um, so that we have a, you know, a built-in crowd, and, um, inviting some, uh, you know, some local media outlets, and maybe we can have one of our firefighter friends here do a, a demonstration.
I would like to do it in case I may.
We'll, we'll, we'll have to, we'll train, we'll train staff, we'll train staff on that, right? Yeah.
That was what my question was going to be, if, if they were going to show the staff how to use it?
Yep, we'll deal with that.
Something, something in addition to this, I'm not sure if it goes together with this organization, but a CPR class as well, because in order for this to be effective, it's going to give a voice prompt if they don't have a pulse.
Yeah, so I, I figure with two firefighters on the board, uh, we should be able to put it together, um, with ease, and maybe we even get MD forty involved and, uh, and have them, uh, you know, help us out in planning that, but I think it's definitely a good thing to have donate to the city, and, uh, and, and I, I, obviously, the mission of our organization is very, uh, important, and, and I'm glad that they are, they've, they've offered this to us and, and, uh, you know, go ahead. I guess Madam Nurse.
I want to be mayor, Gargado, would he go to Plaza or CPR?
Right now?
I used to have it, I used to have it in CPR, Plaza.
I know.
But I know if you could do it for us, what they...
You're a little most of all.
Really, you mean?
We, we pass the torch, trying to be someone else already, but we can provide the glass where we want.
That'd be great, I really appreciate it.
I volunteer, Commissioner Blanca, so we can try out the AED, see if it works.
So, so I, I, this is a resolution, so, and it's been read, I, I need a motion in a second, and we'll plan the, we'll plan the event internally.
Motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
Who, who had the second? Fight for, over here, Blanca. Commissioner Blanca has a second, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All against, say nay? Say none, item carries, thank you. And next item?
Item thirteen, good of the order.
Anyone for good of the order?
I have something that I forgot to mention, so the next meeting, I'm not going to be in town.
Okay.
Which is when item C is going to come back, for that appeal has to have a four-fifth vote, correct?
Yes, but that just means that at that point, they would need all four commissioners to go in their favor. All right?
So you can just go out of the...
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
May I, I know this is your point of privilege, your good of the order, but, uh, I, um, tomorrow is Commissioner Candida Blanca's birthday.
Oh, no.
And I think we should wish her a very happy and healthy and blessed birthday.